We have called this meeting to order this evening. Let the record show that all board members except for Ms. Mathis, but she is joining us by following at this time. If present, our attorney and our superintendent, would you please stand for prayer, please? Heavenly Father, we come at this moment, we thank you for the day that you have given us for the opportunities for life itself. We ask this evening for your comfort and for your compassion and for your mercies upon so many lives of those in our community, for the tragic accidents that's taken place, for the sickness that surrounds us, for the lives that have been affected. And we just pray for your, your hope and comfort in those times this evening. We ask for your wisdom this, this evening as we come together to take care of the affairs of our community and this school system. We pray that in all things that first we would honor you and secondly it be best for all in our community. So be with us, leading God us at this time, and we ask this in your name, your Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will adopt the agenda. Did we have my motion seconded? I don't think we have any changes or any corrections, so Ms. Crawford makes the motion. Ms. Agger seconds that. All in favor for adoption of our agenda, say aye. Anybody opposed? Aye, so here it's seconded is Adam, is to approve the minutes for December the fourteenth of 2021. Regent's Board meeting closed here in Executive Section. Aye, Ms. Agger makes that motion.
My second.
Aye, Ms. Crawford seconds it. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Aye, so here it brings us down to our workshop this evening, and Ms. Dow, would you like to take?
Well, I might be a little rusty because it's been five years since I've done one of these. But I want to take the opportunity and let's look at some things that we are looking, implementing in the future. I want to take time and let's look at where we are at financially with our budget. And then I want to take some time to look at, as we continue to work on our personnel issues, especially recruitment. We've had some discussions before about some of the things that other surrounding districts done. So I went and pulled one of theirs and I've written it out to show you what it will be like for us if we chose to do that. So the first thing we're going to do is, we're going to look at the early childhood program implementation. We talked about it earlier on, that we received a grant to implement an early childhood education program. Whereas by, we can take our ninth graders, 10th graders, 11th graders, and 12th graders. And they can come on in and they can start taking one class a year. He said this first year, we'll get to that in a second. And by the time they're seniors, if they pass the test, which we hope that they would be, they will be fully certified to go to work in our pre-K program as a teacher. Not as an aide, but as a teacher. And the good thing about that is if they choose to do that, then through our teach program, they would have the opportunity to continue their education to get their AA degree. And then as soon as they got that, they would be able to move right on in through the teach program for, you know, the financial opportunities that are out there and get their teaching certificate. Now, their teaching certificate, they will be in, you know, early childhood education, but it will give them the opportunity to sit for any subject area exam for any grade, whether it be K one, two, or three, four, or five. So I'm going to show you what it looks like. We've got Kelly and Heather and Jody over here has been pushing behind this thing since the grant came out. So anyway, the district received a grant of $70,000 to establish an early childhood education program at Perry County High School. The ECE, the Early Childhood Education Program, is a career technical education program composed of four courses. TCHF, we utilize the FLBOE for the Education Frameworks to teach the ECE program. And the Frameworks top is found in Early Childhood Education, and that is the curriculum Frameworks number. Aye. I know this is little, but that's why I gave you a copy of it. Back in the day, I could sit back there and read it, but not anymore. Aye, so the early childhood program provides the knowledge and the skills necessary for employment in the childcare industry. They not necessarily have to go to work with us, they can go into one of the providers we have in town. But hopefully they would go to work with us and so that we can grow them to a teaching position within our district. Students who complete the coursework will have completed the Department of Children and Family, DCF mandated forty-hour introduction childcare training, and their five clock hours of DCF-approved literacy training. Students who meet all the requirements as outlined in the requirement checklist for students can be awarded the Early Childhood Professional Certificate. The ECPC is a preschool specialization approved by DCS as meeting the staff credential requirements. So, the program structure. The Florida Department of Education, EPC, is based upon six content areas. They will have a content area that will help them in planning a safe, healthy, supportive, and respectful learning environment. Number two, steps to advance children's physical and intellectual development, including literacy. So it's not all fun and games, there are some actually learning that takes place. Three, positive ways to support and promote children's social and emotional development. Four, strategies to establish productive, positive relationships with families. Strategies to manage effective program operations. And six, maintaining a commitment to professionalism. So it's really just almost exactly like the education programs that education majors go through. Aye, so the program consists of four courses. Very simply named as Early Childhood Education One, Early Childhood Education Two, Early Childhood Education Three, and Early Childhood Education Four. And there again, students completing the program would be awarded the Early Childhood Professional Certificate. Upon completion, students will be expected to sit for the National Child Development Association Certification. And that's where the industry certifications came out, that we can get credit for that.
That's on the CATE list.
And on the CATE list.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so implementation. We're going to look at 2022, 2023 is one year because this is the first year, so it's going to be a little kickier than what we have to get the program up and going in 23, 24. And we even had to do this because we did not want to leave out this upcoming senior class. If they wanted an opportunity to be in it, for them to be able to get all four courses in one year. You know, theoretically, once that's over with, they'll take one as a ninth grader, one as a 10th grader, one as a 11th grader, and one as a 12th grader. But they're going to have, the senior will have to double up this year. So we're looking at this year with our 10th grade, Early Childhood Education One. So any 10th grader who wants to sign up for the program, they'll have this one class year on because of the number of hours, clock hours that they have to, because of CTE. Then 11th graders would have to take two courses, Early Childhood One and Early Childhood Two. And then our seniors, if they choose to be in the program, and it's doable because most of the time by their senior year, they are looking for classes to take. They would have to take Early Childhood One, Two, Three, and Four all year long. So if the seniors want to take advantage of this program, they will have to take all four courses in one year. Each class requires a minimum of 150 hours instruction to receive credit. That's why it's got to be a year-long class. Aye, now ladies, if I'm overlooking something that needs to be spoken, brought out, feel free to speak. Okay, in 23, 24, once we get the program established, hopefully, then our 10th graders, and we decided not to involve the ninth graders to begin with because they have such a hard time transitioning from middle school to high school. And so we'd rather them, you know, have an opportunity to pick up some of those courses and get their feet wet in the high school before they enter into this. So as 10th graders, they take one early childhood class. As 11th grade, they would take Early Childhood Two. And then as seniors, they would have Early Childhood Three and Four. Aye, so now this is not only classroom work, there will be sometimes that they're actually doing lab assignments, going over to Perry Primary and working in the pre-K program. So they get, you know, experience, actual classroom experience, as well as the theory that comes along with the classrooms, with the instruction. Aye, budget. Aye, funds will be used for startup expenses associated with the ECE program. Aye, we got, the grant was $70,000, correct? So we're looking at teacher salary benefits, even up to $60,000 of that, to get the program up and running. And then we're going to look using $4,000 to develop the materials and the curriculum. And then we're going to set aside $6,000 for testing, paraphrase, CDA, background checks, and all that requirements. And this is startup expenses, and we're going to target March 20, March of this year, 2022, to try to hire the teacher, get him on board, let them get used to seeing what the curriculum is made of, to organize the program, set up our schedule, see, you know, and work with the primary school about how we want to work it back and forth. So that will give them March, April, May, and June to get prepared. So hopefully, we will hit the ground running in August of this school year. Aye, sustainability. The Early Childhood Education Program, once established, will generate FTE and will be eligible for the Carl D. Perkins Grant Funds, so we can continue to get some funding from them. Additionally, the attainment of the Child Developed Associate CDA will earn bonus CATE funding for the district.
You got them with that?
It's a point F2STE, so it's about $840.
Per student?
Per, per passed exam.
What was that question being?
The, the funding.
What was the weight of that CATE funding?
Oh, okay, so.
They have different weights. That's a point two, so it's about $840.
Per passed.
And, I mean, there's some things that comes out of that. Twenty percent goes to the district, $50 would go to the teacher as a bonus.
Just like programs we do.
Correct.
Okay, what is the benefit from the student and what's the benefit for the district? The students, when the program is completed, will be able to apply for one of the district pre-K instruction positions.
Ms. Dow, I have a quick question. Is this only going to be for high school students? Like, people, once they graduate, they won't have this option to take this program?
This is going on with the public. Okay, these CTE classes, Career Technical Education classes, can articulate toward credit classes for an associate arts degree. So these four classes, they pay, they will earn college credit for those towards their associate arts degree. Hopefully, that will spur them on to, once they move over into Perry Primary as a teacher, that they will use the availability to teach scholarship to be able to continue to recruit. And you'll see one of our success stories when we show you our promotional video in just a second. Which started out as a teacher's aide, you know, moved into, she got her CDA, and then she moved in and she got her AA, and then she got her BS, and now she's teaching. What grade? She's a penny yard teacher, and she worked this up through, and we got settled that way, you and I. And I can speak to the benefit of it because that's what my nine daughters.
Well, I guess that's why I asked the question, like, is it just for high school students? Because I could see so many, like, I know a couple students now that they're working on their AA for teaching, but it seemed like this would be so beneficial for them now.
So anybody can go take their CDA, can go get their 40 hours, can go do all of that. Once they can, once they get a job at the primary school, then they can use the teach scholarship to continue their tradition. And to be honest, that's why a lot of the students that we have or teachers that we have now, they come, they get their 40 hours, they do all the things we have to do, and then they apply for their teach scholarship. And while they're working at the parent's school, they're going to school for their AA and then.
North Florida has the early childhood program. North Florida has it.
I know they do. That's why I was, that's why I was wondering if it was something.
I mean, anybody can go and take it there.
Can they take that while, can they like, earn a CDA while they're working on it?
Yes, because this.
Jeannie has a question.
Yes, ma'am, just one second.
What's a career certificate program? It's a post-secondary program, it's a career certificate program. Now, there is an articulation, once that's completed, that articulates credits over.
It articulates nine college credits over to a college program.
But, but if I were in the early childhood program at North Florida, that's a career certificate. So I could finish that and go to work, then I could articulate those credits over to that degree and work for my, my teaching degree.
So they can take time off from their AA degree, get this certificate, get them a job, and then get the teach scholarship to pay for the rest of their AA.
So they, so they can do it while they work on their AA and?
It's two separate things. You don't have to have your, you don't have to have your CDA to be a teacher's aide.
I know that.
So you can do both, and so we have some that did that, that you have some that are doing it the other way.
Okay, Ms. Mathis?
Um, my question is about, but explaining to Jody, I think, what is a hold certification for the teachers of this program? I know a lot of teaching programs require a person to hold certification in the area that they're teaching for a minimum of six years. Is that the case with this?
No, it is not, no.
Require a certified teacher.
Okay. Does it require a certified teacher that's separately or anything like that?
Mathis, certified teacher, preferably one with early childhood certification, but does not have to have.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
With, with one teacher, does it, do we have a maximum number of slots?
Students, well, we may have to bite the bullet this first year. You know, to get the kids interested in it. Um, we will, we're doing some guestimating of many lots of other students we'd have. We may have more 10th, 11th graders than we will seniors because of having taken four classes, but we get them ultimately, we may have three seniors, four seniors class a year, but I think it's worth our while on this first year, do not worry about class size.
Is this going to be offered on, I promise I won't, I think it's on my mind, but it's on my mind and I don't, I wrote it down, but I don't want to forget it. Is this going to be located down at Jody, or is it going to be at the house?
This is not, this is not a post-secondary program, this is a secondary CTE program. So at the high school and Perry Primary.
If it was like post-secondary, then adults could go, but it is a secondary. Okay, aye, so let's see where we're at.
So, kind of, just one, there's some other benefits to the students that maybe at their bullets or there I didn't see them. And that's that that will truly be a CTE program. So those students will be eligible for the Vocational Gold Seal Scholarship. They'll also be eligible for the CATE Scholarship, whether they go into education or not. I mean, they could take that and go into what, they could go to welding if they wanted to. So there's two state scholarships that they'll now be eligible for because it is a complete program. And they'll be eligible with that national credential, it counts as a math and sci, or science credit. So I mean, there are some additional CTE benefits to that complete program as well.
Yeah, I noticed that, and I was, I was very happy to see that that could, you know, offer someone an opportunity for the gold seal, because I think a lot of our kids, they just pay attention to the top white creatures, and they don't ever pay attention to gold seal.
We don't want to be selfish, but we would hope they would go the education route because that's where we need the help. Okay, here's our promotional video that our, is up for an Academy Award within Taylor County. I've got several, we've got both of our, you know, actors up here.
Hi, I'm Kelly Grant, assistant school here at Cedar County Primary School. I'm an employee, the principal of Cedar County High School. We're here today to share exciting opportunities we have for Cedar County students. Starting this fall, we will be offering an early childhood professional certification program. That program will allow our students to get some hands-on training through kinds of recovery school and the last turn eight, and eventually we have teachers who are very excited about the opportunity because it will help us as a district through our own teachers and our own students who want to get back on the teaching field. We're planning to have a meeting on Thursday, January twenty, at Cedar County High School to talk about the opportunity, and so we will hold a meeting there on that day. Next, we have Cedar County Primary School, Kelly, our teacher, to talk to you about the teach scholarship program that she views and the opportunity she will have to use it as well.
Hello, I'm Amy Dalton, and I have been with the Cedar County School System since 1993. I started as a teacher's aide and decided that, hey, I would love to become a teacher. So I used to teach scholarship to help me further my education and pay for my degree in early childhood. The associate's degree was the first degree that I was able to achieve through the teach scholarship. And after doing that, I said, well, hey, I want to do some more. So I went on and got my bachelor's degree. And now I've decided that I want to return to school to finish my master's degree. And teach is going to help me to do that. So teach is a wonderful resource, a wonderful scholarship, and is available to students that are seeking to further their degree and continue their career path in education. We're excited about this opportunity and we'll have to see high school students at the high school gym on Thursday, January twentieth at 10 a.m.
Are you going to go there?
Am I going to be there?
Okay, so that's, okay, let's change directions. Let's look at a mid-year budget review. We're looking at categorical funds only here because those are the ones that we're delving into right and left all year long. These are the ones that are designated, can only be used for that particular area. So we're going to look at the categorical funds that are anticipated to end with a deficit fund balance. So right now, we're in deficit funds balance spending mode, but we started looking at these, and we got, you know, some ideas, plus we've got some reasons why this is happening. On our safe school allocation, our allocation that we got was $430,278.8. So our projected expenditures were $551,180. So we're going to end up in a deficit in that of $120,392. Now, that is the funding that goes towards our school resource officers. So the expense of the school resource officers are more than what the safe school allocation is. Hopefully, the safe school allocation will go up, but if it doesn't, then that $120,000 comes in the tunnel.
So we were already paying that before the safe school allocation, we were paying for the offices.
We were paying for two offices, but we were using that safe school money for some other things. But one, we mandated, and we had to have one in our school, of course, I would give that, but then, the extra funding they gave, they cover.
Right, right. So my question, I guess, is, this $120 is for, I know we got, like, four or five?
We got five.
Five, so that $120 is for the extra three that we were not paying before? Or is that over in the number?
We always spent more than what we received in safe schools for SRS. We were al, the contract with the sheriff was always more than our allocation.
Right.
This past year, our allocation did go up, but just a little bit, but the sheriff's contract went up about $50,000. So that added to the deficit that we already had.
Right, but my question.
But we didn't get any more officers.
But my question is this, before all of this happened, when we only had two officers, we spent close to that amount in our budget to pay those two officers? I know, but I'm talking about before the safe school allocation, what did we spend in officer salary?
A few years ago, I'd have to look.
But I'm just trying to get it in my mind, are we really in the deficit $120, or is that something that we've always paid?
We're in the hole, but we all want to make it up because of funding.
The allocation was never this large until they made that mandate.
Right, and I'm trying to go before mandate.
Yeah, we, we probably still pay more than the allocation. Probably not as much, but the cost was probably greater. Because the allocation used to be minute.
Right.
Before.
Right.
So it's probably always been a deficit, but it is growing.
That's the point I'm trying to make, as far as the deficit, we're probably not any worse off than.
I don't know, perceived one, services.
Right, right.
When the service.
So, like, when, when did we start? Because I thought at one time, I think I'm kind of asking the same question, but I'm here. As, I thought at one time, like, we was paying for so many officers and then Sharon was paying for officers.
That was many, many years ago.
You're thinking back, where he gave us, like, two, we paid for two.
Yeah, that was.
If they gave us two, that's no more. Like, we have a set amount, and there's how many officers we get, and he doesn't pay for any anymore.
So was we over less this budget year?
He pays for the car, he pays for the uniform, he pays for the.
We pay for it.
Well.
Our contract. Our contract's $550,000 for seven officers.
I know, but what I'm saying is, we don't own those cars.
No, we don't, they don't even work for us.
We don't fill those cars, and we don't do those bullets, and we don't do.
But they're in the contract, I mean, we're paid.
But he gets to use our officers in our, in our show.
Well, they're his officers, really, I mean, they work for him.
Right, but we pay them. And he gets to use our money to, for them to do what he wants them to do in summer and autumn. And why is that session we can't do such?
Okay, instructional materials, we had a roll forward of $116,000. Our allocation was $204,611. Our expenditures, we have spent is $357,286.52. So right now, we've got a deficit of about $35,000 in instructional units, and that's pretty well.
Well, and we never have a deficit there, we pick it up and power one, and we've actually picked up a lot with cares, and we may pick up that $35,000 deficit, Sharon and I'll start putting our heads together and we'll move this stuff around. But we typically do not overspend that categorical, but we had a huge textbook adoption this year, like, huge. And so that may even go away, but we never, Sharon never lets that go into a deficit. We don't do that.
That was the plan, as you talked about.
Some of these things will be cleaned up, so that's not something to be concerned about. That's not a typical deficit. We'll, we'll think of that as federal funds, but actually, our language arts and our reading curriculum, whenever I add it all up, it, what we have already paid out as other federal funding, it was over a half million. Textbook costs have gone skyrocketing, and whatever English, the language.
Textbook costs have gone skyrocketing and whatever, English, but language arts and reading are both big adoptions and they put them both in the same year. I feel like next year is going to be another big expenditure year because you've got math and math intervention supplemental in the same year. So those are the two biggest adoptions that we have.
How much, um, I guess my question is, do we have such a huge, um, adoption because of the new standards, um, that came down with, you know, what the governor, what D O E rolled out? Or is it just, it was that time of year?
Well, they put all language arts adoption whenever the, the, uh, standards change mandate came down from the government.
Right.
So we had not had any language arts or reading new adoption since two thousand thirteen. So normally, it's every five years.
Right.
And so this was a huge adoption year and, and it's been nearly a, you know, nine years.
So it was because of the new standards?
And the D O E gives you certain books that you can pick from. Now, so the district decide which ones they go to, but we cannot go out on our own and work for textbooks we have to follow the D O E. Okay, all right, listen. They're trying to find me about my.
It's part warranty.
Warranty on my car. Okay, here we go. Transportation allocation was seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, expenditures were one point five million, so we're operating at a deficit of eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars for a hundred and nine, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars, I mean, that's not changed. The only caveat here is that there is a bill before the legislature to require districts to transport kids who live, start with one mile. So that won't affect us. Hopefully, the increase in transportation categorical we get may come up, but we, we can use it to help cover up some of.
But we don't know what that's going to be.
Right, we won't know. The governor's got his budget.
Superintendent, I asked about the dual enrollment. I asked specifically if the CTE was in any of that.
Yes.
Well, we pay, we pay dual enrollment fees for some of her students.
Not out of the project.
Okay.
I did, we just did, we just picked up two hundred thousand dollars for their CTE dual enrollment, so. Well, that would be in whole.
I know we pay fees for your kids.
It's a different project, it's just a.
And we just got two hundred thousand more for that.
Yay.
All right, so and then mental health roll forward, we had forty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars, it's unchanged. We got an allocation of two hundred and three thousand. Our expenditures were two hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and sixty-one, so we had a deficit of twenty-four thousand dollars. But you see, and on the agenda today, where the contract with our young help provider, he was offered, well, given all these extra hours that go over and beyond his contract. And he really didn't need them, so during the course of the conversation, he says, look, I don't need the second person. So he give those hours back to us and so that will cover some of that. But we'll also pick up some of the care's money to cover the rest of it. Okay. All right, general fund balance, this is just a worksheet, beginning fund balance, as of seven one per the ordinary generals, that we had four point two million dollars in our annual fund, that was our unreserved fund balance. We received twenty-three million seven hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars. Our projected revenue cost was twenty-three million four hundred and forty-nine thousand. And that was the difference between our total revenues and projected revenues, sort of views, was they take out our money for the scholarships. That where the parent can go and apply for a scholarship to go to private school or that. So the total expenditure budget was twenty-six million forty-three thousand one hundred and one. Projected expenditures was twenty-five million. We'll get a transfer from our CO funds to cover our property, property and casualty insurance of about five hundred thousand dollars. So our projected annual fund balance as of June thirtieth will be two point four million dollars. That will be a fund balance ratio of about ten point four one percent. Uh, total expenditures beyond revenue was one point seven million dollars, which would bring that fund balance down to around eight point four, five percent. Did I get that right, Ashley? We argued back and forth about that. All right, so here's the highlights of the governor's budget. We all know that the governor's budget is not the operating budget that we have to work with. It is what the governor is recommending. It still has to go to the legislature and they have got to decide. The good thing about that this year is that our governor has strong support in the legislature. So this been an election year and the support he's got, I am hoping that we'll get a lot of his budgets because that would help us out tremendously, but that is not necessarily. So that's just a civics lesson right there. So the governor has successfully promoted many specific physical priorities and his budget reflects those. Our governor budget highlights is that the F E F P is an increased spending of to eight thousand dollars, which is an increase of a hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Now remember, the student F T E is divided into total state funding, so that's what the budget shows that we will be spending. Now, that's not your base student allocation, that's, that your F T E is based upon. So it also votes into the classroom teachers and principals a thousand dollar balance again. His funding continued to work towards the goal of a minimum teacher salary of forty-seven thousand five hundred. In the F E F P, an increase of a hundred and twenty-four dollars in the base spending allocation. That is what is used to multiply with your F T E in terms of your funding. And that there's an increase in state school, safe school initiatives, which is, we talked about earlier, there's an increase in mental health and instructional materials. That was three areas that we were debt spending. There's going to be a return on funding for early childhood teacher scholarships, childcare and structured quality teacher training is what we had just talked about there. So that's what we're looking for, which is hopefully, I think, always before, there were some governors, when that came out and on some slave countryside, he didn't have the power or the backing to get that, but I'm hoping this is different. All right, now this is the last one. We're going to look at a teacher recruitment program. That's been a lot of discussion with heads about, since I've been here, and I pulled a sample from a neighboring district. So if we look at it, the policy premise is that this district school board recognizes the need to recruit, retain highly qualified teachers. We think the same thing. It also recognizes that due to its geographical location, it is difficult to recruit and retain teachers from other areas. Sounds just like Taylor County. Therefore, there is a need to grow our own highly qualified teachers. This is a teacher recruitment program, this is a sample, and their board policy is entitled recruitment and retention incentive. And it reads, "The district school board will reimburse college tuition for each local high school graduate that receives a four-year degree and obtains employment teaching at one of the district schools. The reimbursement will be based on the semester credit rate of the local college serving that county. The scholarship will be for a maximum of a hundred and twenty hours." And so they'll get the supplement for the retention bonus based on only a hundred and twenty hours of their college credit. That'll make a little bit more sense in just a second. So to be eligible for the supplement, they have got to be a local high school graduate. They have to have graduated from the high school in their county. They have obtained employment with the county school district within six years of graduating high school. So they're employed after the date the policy would go into effect. So it's not retroactive. Once their policy was put into effect, those who hired after that qualified for the supplement. They have to receive an effective or higher evaluation from the preceding year. Only college credits that the employee received a B or a better grade and that class will be reimbursed.
So they've got to be there a year before they'll get it.
Right, where they have to be employed before they qualify.
Well, I mean, the whole year, because they haven't been graded until that.
Back to them, at the end of that year, if they have a higher, I think, or higher revenue. Okay. Retention supplements will be paid as follows. So they're paying twenty percent for each year the teacher teaches and meets above criteria. In other words, they play twenty percent of that a hundred and twenty hours. So example, the teacher receives an effective rating from the previous year and is rehired. The teacher will receive a supplement of twenty-four times the hourly rate of tuition. So if you divide twenty percent into a hundred and twenty, it's twenty-four. So that's where that twenty-four comes. So you'll get the first payment, well, twenty-four hours, times the hourly rate of tuition. Uh, the hourly rate of tuition is based upon the surrounding colleges that your kids were assigned to. So based off of what the tuition for a class north Florida would be. All right, so the teacher receiving needs improvement or developing will receive no money for the preceding year, however, will be eligible for the next year's supplement if they receive an effective evaluation.
Do we really think that's going to be enough?
Well, let's see the numbers. Okay. So all supplements must be earned within the first five years of employment. At beginning of each fiscal year, the district school board will receive a report from the superintendent on how many teachers were hired under this policy and on the district financial ability to continue the plan for the next school year. If the district does not fund a plan for a certain year, then the party will not have that year counted against their five years of eligibility. So that gives the district an out because of bad financial. Okay, so this is the cost analysis of, for a Taylor teacher recruitment retention supplement. Like, the maximum number of hours we reimburse is a hundred and twenty hours. So you divide that by the five years that they have to complete this, and then, so the average hours per year to be reimbursed is twenty-four hours. You multiply that by the semester credit rate of North Florida College, which is ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents. So the total cost per year, per teacher, is two thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars. After five years, that, if that teacher has those high evaluations every year, after five years, they'd be reimbursed eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Is there a reason why it's compared to the N M C rate?
Pardon?
Is there a reason why it's compared to the N M C rate?
That's just what they did.
Oh, okay.
That's just what they did. And they compared it to.
The college?
Lake City Community College, which is Gulf Coast, because that's where they're, they're assigned to, like, we're assigned to North Florida. Okay. All right, so that's what it would look like. So now all of them is presenting another option, so as we start finalizing our recruitment plan, this is one of the options if you start to choose.
How expensive is it being for them, Vina? What do you say?
Pretty well, I think. I mean, Jenny probably can come with, because we're both in Dixie County.
And this also will have to be negotiated as well with the instructional.
Jenny, are you on there?
I mean, I guess it sparks my interest, um, for us as a district, because I definitely think it would be, um, something for us to, um, include as part of our recruitment.
Ask her a question.
All right, we got a question for you. How successful has this teacher recruitment program with policies I got from you has been at Dixie County?
I believe they have six teachers.
Current, that's participating in this program.
Yeah.
And I think they started it in eighteen, at least that's what the date it stated in their policy, that they had to have been hired, uh, two thousand and eighteen, so I would assume that those six teachers have come since that time here, which is pretty good.
Yeah, I understand, I, I definitely think it's, um, something that, you know, would be beneficial for us, recruiting for us. I guess my concern is, um, the sustainability of it. I guess that's my.
We have an out.
We have the out.
We have an out.
Yeah, I know we have an out, but I just, I would hate for it to, you know, really work and then we couldn't, like, go on.
Jenny, do you have a question?
I do, I think here we're coming up to a major, but, um, just about, it's just local high schools instead of Taylor County schools, is there a reason for that?
Well, no, because I was basing it off the other program and I didn't want to put Dixie County in.
But if we put Taylor County high school graduate.
Right, if, if we write the policy, yes, we will. We will do, put Taylor County in the security.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's all, folks. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I got a question. Back to, um, the, um, E, am I saying it right? C T E, okay, C C or E C C? I don't know.
E C E.
D K E. Just, just a quick question, um, because I know this is just a workshop. So, um, is there a reason this is not, that there is this, is there a reason that this is only a dual enrollment interest?
It's not dual enrollment, because dual enrollment would imply they're getting college credit. It is a secondary CTE program.
Because that's what the grant.
The reason it's not going to be a post-secondary program?
Yes, that's my question.
If it becomes a program at our school, we now must place those students, they have to go to work in field, and right now, the E C P C isn't on a high, high wage, um, high wage list, and so I don't even know that we could get it accepted as a program at our school.
It wasn't a program, grant written towards.
It was, but I mean, even, even to, even to visualize it as a post-secondary prob- uh, program for us, it, it's so much easier, I'm going to say this two ways, it's so much easy to start a program at a secondary level, but quite frankly, the high school needs quality CTE programs because everybody's not going to that four-year university. So we need those programs that build that career interest, like Ag, like, like digital design, you know, those, those electors are important because they've got to have elective credits.
Right, and that's why I'm asking the question, because I don't, I mean, I feel like most kids that most of the time that go into education is because of an experience they've had with an educator, or it's because of maybe a family, you know, they come from a family of educators. But I guess my concern is that most of the time, you don't hear education promoted like you hear other degrees promoted. So I guess my mindset is we got head start, and we do know we got a lot of local, you know, daycare, childcare facilities, so I'm just trying to, you know, envision it more than just a high school opportunity. I definitely agree that it should start at the high school level, because I think those kids can wrap it around their mind, you know, this is something, because like, I mean, she's doing the medical code and dealing program. You know, we, we want her to go, you know, to school, because we went to school, but her focus right now, she's just interested in finishing that two-year program. And so, you know, I was telling my sister, I was like, well, it's a start, she can work at home with that, and it's, you know, it's a career that grows. And so, you know, I was telling my sister, I was like, well, it's a start, she can work at home with that, and it's, you know, it's a career that grows. So I guess like with this, you know, because I know we got a lot of kids right now, you know, they're not doing anything. But if this program become available like we anticipated, what would be the opportunity that they could come down to TTI, get in this program, and then continue on to get their AA or?
We have to have permission from the state to offer a program, and right now, I don't see them bringing us permission for that.
Well, and I think too, and maybe this is not what you're asking, but if, say they have already graduated high school, but that's something they want to do, they could come get a job with Kelly and they can work as a childcare provider and they can qualify, right, as an A, unpre-K, and they can qualify for the TTE scholarship, which will pay for them to go to college, and they get that experience, we get a worker, and then they move on. So they don't have to do the high school route, but if they're already past that point, they can come work with Kelly and.
So it's still an opportunity globally outside of high.
Yes.
I guess that's.
This is to get, this is to take our kids and funnel them that way.
There's not an opportunity to take the program, there is an opportunity to enter the career.
Right, okay. And then the scholarship. They would have to do their CDA, the CDA of their NFCC.
So right now, if we had a twenty-one graduate, they could use the TTE scholarship, get a job for you, but go to NFCC, get their certification, but then use it to go on.
Well, there's even, the certification could be totally online.
Right.
The CDA, you wouldn't even have to go to NFCC. There's different programs where you could earn your childcare credential.
Forty hours, which is why that certification is not on the CATE list.
Yeah.
Well, it has to be one hundred and fifty hours.
You have to have one hundred and eighty hours total, but you could earn it online.
Well, I, I think this is, you know, a couple of good pathways, and I think a lot of time and effort's been on it. I really appreciate all we're doing, because this is something that we, we ask to be worked on, but I do appreciate that.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I mean, I'm excited for it, and I'm glad you guys work that, because it's up and going.
We plan on advertising for the position.
Thank you for this workshop.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we also advertising for the teachers, each of them, the teacher teachers?
We will, that will be added onto our negotiation with our, oh, it's already on there? Yes.
I'm sorry.
I don't know. Have you advertised?
I have not.
It's going to be advertised.
It, it needs, so, so that career and technical student organization is part of the CTE framework. That teacher needs to be that person. It's in the framework, just like an ag teacher is the FFA advisor and, and, you know, our teachers are skills USA advisors. The teacher of that program needs to be the advisor of that, of that organization.
I stand corrected. As soon as we find our teacher, that will supplement, that responsibility will be added to that person.
Okay, it's going to take a very special process for that position, but I would love, and I would love to be there. I was there, and I'm sorry, I had to leave, but I would consider the school, our students, right now, the boardroom, just planning to be.
Well.
I would love for them to be part of this conversation.
They will be because they're going to, they have a meeting set up, that they're going to show the video, the whole group, and then they're going to have small groups, be those who are interested.
Right, right. The entire thing is on the show pass, because everything stops here, it's wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for the workshop, and this brings us down to the items of interest by the public. Do we have any items of concern this afternoon? Definitely back to come before the board is consented, anyone present? All right, if not, we'll move forward. The consent items were approved by the adoption of the agenda. This brings us down to twelve point thirteen. The same thing, establishment of positions, our transportation coordinator is requesting to create five bus drivers and two bus aides for the district tutoring program, January the eleventh of twenty twenty-two through April the twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-two. And so, what's here is the board.
Can I make a motion?
All right, Ms. Carlton makes a motion. All right, Ms. Agner seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried, item thirteen point zero eight. Our interim superintendent, Mr. Paul Dahl, is requesting the approval to utilize the process of piggybacking on the contract between Franklin County School District and Clemmons Rutherford and Associates Incorporated to enter a contract to vote for its associates to approve the architectural plans for the medical instructional building for the Big Ben Technical College.
Aye.
All right, Ms. Agner makes that motion, we have a second. All right, Ms. Carlton seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried, down to fifteen point oh two, this is a public hearing, we have three items, policy items here. The first one is five point four zero on student illness, and this is a public hearing. Do we have any discussion, anything on item five point four zero on student illness policy? If not, do we have a motion? Ms. Carlton makes that motion to approve the policy, Ms. Agner seconded, any discussion on the board?
Yes, I just got a question. I think I asked this one before, but this policy is just to up, to update our current policy, this has nothing to do with it?
It's not a new policy.
Okay.
Yes, you're right, it's updated.
It's updated.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried, policy five point four one, which is dealing with policy on school health services. If you want, would like to address this, it's a public hearing this evening. If not, what's here the board?
Let's move.
Ms. Carlton makes that motion.
Second.
You second, Ms. Danielle seconded, is, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried, and then item number three, policy five point four two, notification of involuntary examination, policy here. Do we have any other public who'd like to address this? If not, here's the board, Ms. Carlton makes a motion that we approve this policy. Ms. Agner seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so carried. Just like to make, item eighteen point oh one is, was, this was a consent item, but I just want to make sure that we acknowledge these four items here of our graduation rate, AIC leave, and our safety protocol for COVID nineteen, and then of course, from the governor and the legislation funding due to that. We make acknowledgement of these items that have been before us. And this brings us down to the items of interest by the superintendent and board, and just like to say that we do have a closed hearing this evening, and also, I think, an executive session this evening.
Yes.
Okay, so, let's go, first of all, Ms. Dahl.
Okay. In front of you, I've got some items of interest and things I want to share with you. First of all, is the draft schedule for construction of Big Ben Technical College's nurses facility. That is a time-sensitive construction project, and so when you, this is the projected draft schedule now for that so far, Jody, my fan, myself, that was representative of Clemmons Rutherford, and he was very confident they could, with what type of building it was going to be, that they could get it done, but we got that time scale. All right, second thing is, is celebrate literacy week in Florida, this was the notice we sent out to all of our principals, and then next is celebrate literacy week, Taylor County. This is what our, all of our schools are going to be doing during the, this celebrates district week. Thank you, Sharon, for the work and putting that together, and if you got a free minute, you may just want to step into one of the schools one day if you can see what they're doing, just to, you know, let the kids see us, and, I don't know, we appreciate what they're doing. And the next item is Taylor County Primary School is adding after-school enrichment activities for their students. So I made you aware of those, you can see what, you know, it's not all remediation and homework help and tutoring. They are providing some fun things for their kids to do. And then.
That's going out for the parents and advertisers and all that.
Yes, that's been done. All right, the Taylor County High School juniors in our American history class who were visited by a representative of the Tri-City Electric Program was made aware of an opportunity to apply, and if they were chosen, it'd be part of an all-expense trip to Washington, D.C. There's a website they can go out and fill out an application, so they're aware of that. The neat thing is St. Hatchie School's tricycle track that they had started a year ago, and then some of their community leaders got involved and ran in, and Mr. Bray's permission has really upgraded that thing, and they've got a nice little track that they can ride their tricycles on. So I thought that would be worth sharing, so if you're over there sometime, they won't stop to see it. We're giving you a January activities calendar, so if you can see what's going on within the district. And then also, I want to do a big thank you to Sheriff's Department and County Commissioner Pam Beagle for donation of four hundred student table games. It's for ages, students age three and up, and we distributed them between Taylor County Elementary School and Taylor County Primary School. St. Hatchie got theirs a little earlier, and we got ours, and they got theirs down there, so that's a thank you, because that is a pre-made, neat little games. And then, the DOE sent a list of Florida Department of Education major accomplishment and asked us to share it with our board members. And then the last thing is the latest COVID protocols for adults and students. It's like the old song, what is, same song, different verse. But this is the latest change, the biggest change up there is that the health department will no longer be doing contract tracing. So that's it.
I have a question real quick. With the after-school program, Kelly, is there going to be a certain, Kelly, don't shoot. My next question is, is there going to be a certain number of students we're looking to serve, or is it just open?
This is, anybody wants to come?
Okay.
For those in registered programs. Now, they've got the remediation tutoring going on also.
But now that is going to be based on a cutoff, right? Aren't we only going to serve certain amount of people every?
Okay, well, thank you. And, Mr. Turner, Ms. Ball, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Danielle.
Um, yes, I just want to, again, thank Mr. Dahl for the workshop tonight. I think you got some really great information, and I'm excited to see, you know, how everything works out with that new early childhood program as well as with the opportunity of the, the teacher recruitment thing. And thank you for bringing that information to the board, letting us see that. And then I want to just, again, congratulate Jody on everything that's going on down at TTI. I know I've, I'm writing to several people, and I do, I've seen the advertisement about the funding available and the opportunity that we have right now. So people can go to school, and there's no reason why, you know, you know, someone could say they don't have an opportunity. And I know I've shared it with several people, and a lot of people said that they was going to check it out. So I just want to congratulate you guys on all the hard work you're doing down there with getting the funding and make sure that the community is aware of the funding. And then, you know, your work speaks for itself, the fact that we got the funding for a new building, and we already worked on a new building. I had the opportunity to talk to one of your current nursing students, and a lot of your nursing students are really interested in our IN program, being local. But, you know, we know what we're doing with right now, but I think we'll eventually, hopefully, you know, have that opportunity. It would be great if this before you leave, but.
I'm going to take some legislation.
I know, all right.
We're ready for it, when it comes, we're ready.
But it's always good, like I say, to run into the, your students and to hear how they enjoying the program and, you know, how they're doing in the program or whatever. And then I don't, you know, I know for the most part, all of us are back, and, you know, like, we had a good rest for holiday break, I pray we did. My condolences goes out to those families that had, you know, loss, and I will keep them in my prayers. And other than that, I'm just, you know, excited about, you know, those guys' last semester of the school year.
All right, thank you. Ms. Agner.
A lot of what Deirdre said, but Jody just talking about the students, we got, we got to have the building before we can get in the IN program. So now you don't have to have it, that's what I was told, so that I was felt wrong. But anyway, a lot of, a lot of people have asked me specifically, well, does that mean we're going to get the IN program? And I was like, what is a start?
It's a hundred percent legislatively driven.
Yeah.
The legislature has to allow us to award AS degrees.
Yes.
And, and the state college lobbyists are very strong.
Yeah, they are, yeah. Okay, and then Paul, the teachers, the thing we're talking about, the recruiting with the teachers. How we make that happen? Where are we with that, and what's our next step?
Well, we're going to have to negotiate, and then we have to develop our policy, and we have to advertise it, and then board approve it. If that's the direction.
Well, that's definitely the direction I thought we've always discussed before, so that's what gets us through, I'm saying, we've got it, now where do we go with it?
Make it on the next agenda, just to prove the development of a
Right.
retention recruitment policy.
I love, I love seeing all the advertisements in the paper. To me, you know, you're covering every place you can cover, you're doing the best you can do, that's all you can do, you know, you can take a horse, you can't make a dream, but it's, but Jody having that out there, February, there's no reason for you not to be able to go to school, that is awesome. I mean, people, it's a great opportunity. Paul, I appreciate all the support that you're doing for us. I know it's a temporary thing, but it's just, you know, you're just doing such a good job, and I really, I really appreciate it, I really do. And of course, like Deirdre said, the barber family and the family, it's just heartbreaking. But I know firsthand what it's like with your child, and it's, it's a horrible thing, it's a horrible, horrible thing. And we just pray for them, we pray for their strength and comfort and peace, and I'm going to give it. And thank all of you that came tonight and did this presentation and put it together, and thinking outside the box and coming up with new ideas. We really, really appreciate y'all.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Carlton.
I concur with what's been said, but I do appreciate all of the work that went in in the workshop tonight and the participation, and I think it's a couple of different directions that we were wanting, and I look forward for us to advancing and moving it forward. I too, send my condolences out to the barber family, but also the other students that were involved, and I know it impacted, it's had on a lot of our students, and they'll be dealing with that for several days, so be mindful of that. And thanks to the superintendent for keeping us informed and working on all these issues, and I appreciate it.
Ms. Mathis still on, but.
Ms. Mathis, you have any items of interest?
I think I think it's the echo, whatever's in the stand, I could have shared clearly everything, but but definitely my heart goes out to the family who lost their son, and the students and the teachers and the staff that are dealing with the loss. And that's something very, it's a heartbreaking thing that we're dealing with, and I think we're dealing with it very long years, and my heart goes out to them. And also the starting things, and I did get to hear all the conversations about dual enrollment always. And I know that, I think it was dual enrollment supplies that we were overbuckin' on, is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
Um, I, I just want to say that to me, that's one of the most important things that we can do for our students, is to give them doing enrollment opportunities and to give them that extra step up, that's greater than just the hospital, the former, the state county hospital. And for those who are interested in it, if they're interested in industry certifications or their college bound, whatever we can do to give them as much as we can when they graduate to seven county hospital, they can see that we're giving the rest of their lives. And I think it's very, very important. So if we're over budget on that, maybe you should spend it up.
Let me reiterate, we typically go over budget in that one. It's on the list, but historically, we make sure that we provide everything that everyone wants kids to have.
And I, I think that we, I mean, I didn't learn from any of this, but with education. And I mean, to me, that, that's a goal, a great goal for us to have. And it's something I've talked to the student, I've had this conversation with her and with Mr. Paul a lot. It's something we're talking about, and I think it's something that everybody looks forward to. But that was when we get there, and tonight we made huge steps towards that for some of our students. And I, I've, I've been very, very happy to be able to join all of them. For getting us so far and setting forth my path.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Let me, I say one more thing.
Okay.
I, I want to thank our staff. We may be small, but we are mighty and good at what's done, so I do appreciate everyone.
Okay, thank you.
This is, um, I forgot one more thing, I forgot. I wanted to acknowledge our ROTC program. They was yesterday in the Martin Luther Jr. parade that they had locally. And they looked very nice, they were very good. I know our middle school band, I think, went over to Swan County, another county, and participated in a parade, and I know our high school band was in front of it. So I just wanted to acknowledge our ROTC program.
Thank you for the need.
Thank you. Alright, as we narrow this meeting on down to the conclusion of it, I concur with all that the board has said. It's, this is our first meeting reading of this new year, and I have seen most of you, all of you, all since last year, but we all haven't changed that much, that's a good thing. But we, this year, I come and go in a hurry. But we're thankful that we're here. Our hearts and prayers go out to those who had such tragic things take place in their lives in the last few days. And just want them to know that we're thinking about them and praying for them. And that we just need to keep on keeping on all the good things that we heard about this evening and workshop, those plans and where we're at. All of us working together, that's what it takes. And I appreciate each of you being here this evening. So with that said, we want to adjourn. We'll take about a five-minute recess, and we have a closed hearing and executive session. So do I, Ms. Agner makes the motion that we adjourn. Ms. Carlton seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Meeting over with.